Welcome, everybody. Thank you very much for attending this meeting of the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public. I'm really pleased to see members of the public here today, so welcome. There's no items that contain exempt information. The meeting will be webcast and is being webcast, and the recording will be made available later through the council's website. It's possible Shiffield Live TV may record the meeting as well. We've received a total of 23 questions from six members of the public, and these will be considered Item Five. Could I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so that we don't disturb the meeting? There isn't a fire test planned for today. If there is, an emergency evacuation, please follow the instructions from the town hall staff. And the point of assembly is Tudor Square. I will now ask each member of the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee to introduce themselves, and then I'll go around and ask the members of council officers who are here to introduce themselves as well. So, I'm Tom Hearn. I'm Chair of...
I'm Helen Charville, and I'm Chair of Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee.
And thanks, Douglas Johnson, Chair of Housing.
councillor Mark Jones, substitute for councillor Dale.
councillor Zahira Nas, councillor for the Donald Ward, also Chair of the Finance Committee.
Fran Belbin, Deputy Leader of the Council.
Ben Miskel, Chair of Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee.
Mike Leavie, member for West Ecclesfield, and substitute for Joe Otten.
chef at Mohamed Ekklesol.
Martin Smith, Dorrit Topley, Chair of the Economic Development, Skills and Culture Committee.
Richard Williams, member for Stanington Ward, and Chair of the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee.
Thank you, everybody. If I could ask, on my left, Greg, if you could begin to introduce yourself. Greg Vell, Director of Public Health.
James Anderson, Director of Policy and Democratic Engagement.
Kate Josephs, Chief Executive.
David Hollis, interim General Counsel.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Thank you very much, everybody. So, apologies for absence, just to formally note, Joe Otten and Dawn Dale have sent in apologies, and Mark Jones is here to replace Dawn Dale, and Mike Leavie replacing Joe Otten. As I said, there's no items where we need to exclude members of the public and press. Item Three, declarations of interest. Are there any members who wish to declare any interests in the items of business on the agenda today? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much. Right. Minutes of previous meetings. We've had a lot of SNR meetings in the last few weeks, so we are looking today at the meetings that we've had on the 31st of May, 19th of June and the 28th of June. Are members happy to approve all three sets as a correct record? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Public questions. So, as I said, we've received 23 questions from six members of the public, and the first question is, I'm going to invite to come up, are Sarah and Fatima, or is it Sarah? Apologies if I've got that wrong. Hello. Hi. So, yes. Microphone's on. The floor is yours.
Okay. So, last month, in the Education Committee meeting, a group of us spoke with the committee as we noticed some very serious concerns about race inequality and equity within the education system. We didn't hear from anyone, even though they said they would contact us. So, we would like to know how serious the Sheffield City Council is taking this. But also, we received an email yesterday, which we appreciate, because it's... Today. Oh, yeah, today. About how you're going to encourage diversity with the school governors and the surrounding team. And we appreciate the difference, the... What's the word, where they actually do something?
Just taking action.
Yeah, the action behind the words that you guys said. But also, I think it's easy to do it for the governors, because they're free positions. But what is the Sheffield City Council going to do for the leadership roles and the diversity in paid positions?
Thank you. So, this, just for everyone's benefit, that's the first of quite a few questions. So, what I'll do is I'll answer each one in turn, if that's all right, and so then we can move through them. So, I think it's worth saying that Sheffield City Council takes the findings of the Race Equality Commission, which came out just under a year ago, very seriously, and progress to become an anti-racist organisation and city is something that we are committed to making. As part of this committee's work, we're going to be having a discussion about the Race Equality Commission on the 2nd of August, which is our next meeting. When you came to the Education, Children and Families Committee last month, the Director of Children's Services and the Chair of the committee did commit to keep up to date with you and keep in touch. I'm sorry if that hasn't happened. There are a number of updates that I can provide, and hopefully you've had some information today as well. So, since that meeting, when you asked your questions, the Director of Children's Services, along with Learn Sheffield, has written to all schools and offered an open invitation to all school leaders, particularly leaders and aspiring Black, Asian and minoritised ethnic leaders, to discuss opportunities and barriers to progression that they may have in their careers. Over 15 people have been contacting in response to that, and the Director of Children's Services is now having conversations to form a small working group in the autumn term after the small holidays, to formulate a co-produced action plan. In addition, work is taking place with Learn Sheffield, as you pointed out already, to increase the diversity of governing bodies and boards of trustees, to make sure that there's reputation from Black, Asian, minoritised ethnic leaders, but also governors of a younger age as well. And the outcome is to, the desired outcome, is to increase representation from local communities and increase the number of governors and trustees of schools who are people of colour, and to increase the number of under 30-year-olds who are on boards and trusts. The Director of Children's Services has said they will keep in touch with you on a monthly basis, and the communication is due to be, further communication is due to be sent out later this week. So, thanks for coming. There will be further information coming to you directly from the director, who you heard from at the committee meeting last month.
So, do the members of the Sheffield City Council recognise that they have contributed to systemic and institutionalised racism within the Sheffield education system?
When the report came out just under a year ago, the commission report set out very clearly the way in which the education system in the city is racialised, and it did make a number of recommendations for change across all aspects of the city's education system, from leadership, management, racial literacy amongst the education workforce, to specific recommendations around exclusions, along with, and also early years provisions. This does have important implications for councillors, and so as members, it's important for elected members, I should say, it's important for all of us to understand our role within this and to do everything that we can to progress with colleagues collectively and individually, moving forward with purpose to becoming a anti-racist organisation.
How is the Sheffield City Council going to ensure that the right training is given to officers and leaders so that equality and equity in leadership is in line with other major cities?
The city council does require all officers to undertake mandatory learning and development around equality, diversity and inclusion, along with unconscious bias training. We know that improving equality and equity in leadership roles is a key challenge for the city and one that we're determined to meet so that we're not out of step with other cities, and that it's in line with our aspiration to become that anti-racist organisation. We will make sure that that mandatory training is taken place.
How will the Sheffield City Council ensure that its workforce reflects the communities it serves? What equitable changes will there be?
Thank you. We do undertake regular workforce monitoring to understand how reflective the workforce is of the communities that we are elected to serve. The data was published as part of something called the Annual Qualities Report, and that was considered by this committee in April. We can send you that if you'd like to take a look at it. What it shows is that the progress is being made, but it's not being made fast enough, and it's patchy within different areas of the council's work. And specifically, what it notes is employees, and I'll quote here from the report, 'Employees who identify as Black, Asian and minority ethnic continue to trend upwards and are now at 16.6% of the council's workforce, up from 15.7% in the previous year. However, that's still not in line with the local population, and there is greater underrepresentation in professional and management-grade roles.' This has likely resulted in less representation in progression and promotion and higher grades. So, progress is being made, but not as fast as it needs to be. So, we will make sure you get the full copy of that report.
Also, by the way, you know, all these questions, in the last meeting, we posted a few clips on social media, and it kind of blew up. And all these questions are specifically from teachers in Sheffield that are people of colour, and obviously they can't be here today because they're teaching. But most of the questions kept saying how they're not protected, so even if there is a representation, it's the fact that they're not protected by you guys or by their school governors, by their leadership positions. And also, this specific question was asked so many times by POC students and teachers, and it was like, how is the Sheffield City Council helping schools across Sheffield decolonise their curriculums and traditional learning methods to allow Black and Brown students to feel represented? And another teacher messaged me this morning, and she said, 'There's a reason why there's a rise in Black and Brown schoolchildren having permanent expulsions, and then they're not protected either, and it's because not only do they not see themselves in the teaching system, but they don't see themselves in their curriculum at all.' And I think there's a big disconnect in Sheffield between education and the actual human element of our communities.
And can I just add to that? I spoke to a teacher as well, and they've said that the curriculum hasn't changed in 10 years, which is kind of crazy. So, since we were in school, they're still learning the same curriculum, and it doesn't reflect modern society, especially the one that we live in today and other cultures and communities. So, what are you guys doing about that? That's our question, really.
Yeah.
The Director of Children's Services, who you heard from last time you were here, is setting up a working group with school leaders, particularly Black, Asian and minoritised ethnic school leaders, to discuss this point exactly about decolonising the curriculum. But what I hear from you, loud and clear, is that that also needs to have input from students and from, yeah, from students and people learning those curricula. So, I think I will take that away and speak to the Director of Children's Services to find out if there's roots for how learners, students can input views into that, because that's the only way in which there will be, I think, sufficient buy-in for efforts to decolonise the curriculum.
Have members of the Sheffield City Council directly spoken to POC teachers and students to know if they feel protected by the council, or is it just assumed?
The, again, Director of Children's Services, who is leading this work for the city council, has written to all schools, offering an open invitation to discuss opportunities and barriers for people of colour in the education system. She's been contacted by a number of people, and she's having conversations as well to look to set up a working group in the autumn. And that's to understand what's happening, but also to make sure that any response to it is co-produced with those people. And that that work, those conversations, are feeding into the broader work to make sure that this council is an anti-racist organisation and that the education system is by its design anti-racist. So, I'm sure plenty of elected members will have had conversations as well, but that's the work that the Director of Children's Services, who's leading this, is now doing.
Despite the LowCOP report that the council pledging to be more transparent and accountable, does this only... Accountable? Does this only apply to some communities and not others? I submitted three FOI requests, which were all refused, requesting emails from council officers relating to a school in Sheffield. This request was refused. I asked for the request to be refined so that they could give me the information I needed, but under the required cost. This was then ignored. Instead, the council offered me an SLA, a document that I didn't request. I appealed to the ICO. They agreed and said the council should help me refine the request. The council was meant to respond to me by the 12th of June, and I still haven't received anything. Why is it acceptable to just deny the request, to refine a request? What is the Sheffield City Council hiding?
We are committed to being an open organisation and are committed to freedom of information principles. And I've been given an answer, it's quite technical by nature what you're asking, so let me just be clear about the information I've been given, and then you can tell me. In this instance, we've invited you, as you said, to refine the request so that it doesn't exceed the cost of compliance. We were given a deadline by the Information Commissioner's Office to respond by the 20th of June, not as I think you said, the 12th. And so, we contacted you on the 26th of June, apologising to you for the delayed response and the Information Commissioner. And I further understand that you have refined the request and have been advised that you will get a response by the 24th of July. And apologies for the delay in providing that response to you. We will make sure that it gets to you by the 24th of July.
Do council officers agree that making judgements about a person's ability to do a job without ever meeting them accounts to discrimination?
What I would say is, I guess in general terms, the council operates a standard recruitment process whereby candidates are invited to complete an application form before progressing to a formal interview. Application forms have personal information about that applicant redacted at the point of shortlisting to reduce the likelihood of unconscious bias influencing which candidates may proceed to an interview. It wouldn't be possible to offer every candidate an interview, but we would never offer a job to any candidate without meeting them at interview first. Any decisions about people in existing roles should also follow the proper processes. We know that we've got some improvements to make, but that's the standard recruitment process that we follow.
I think this is more so regarding people in existing jobs as well, so judging people based off of...
Yeah, so say if there's a teacher that's a person of colour, and that teacher is being accused that they're not good at their job, even though you've never seen them work at their job, or seen the impact that they've had on the community, or even talked to them in person directly and just ignored them and refused all the requests and delayed all the action, do you think that's, like, do you think that's discrimination?
Obviously, I can't comment on individual circumstances, but in general, any body who's in an existing role should be, the due process should be followed, which wouldn't be discriminatory. But we would need to look at each circumstance, and if there is, if there are particular circumstances that, you know, you or colleagues are referring to, then we would, of course, look at them.
Because when people apply for a job, they have to, like you said, they have a whole procedure that they go through to get that job. It's not as if they get a job overnight. There's 10 to 15 years of experience before they get a job, and when they're getting, when they get the job, it's because they deserve it. So, when you take that job away from them, I think it accounts to discrimination because there's no other reason behind that.
Okay. Well, as I say, I can't comment on particular circumstances which may be sitting behind the question, but if there is things that you would want to raise with us where you can go into more detail, then we can, of course, have that conversation after this meeting.
I think it's not just an individual case, though. It has happened.
Yeah, it's happened to multiple POC teachers, not even just teachers, because when I posted this on social media, a lot of people in healthcare messaged me, a lot of people, it's healthcare, education, in law. I think it's just a common thing in Sheffield where our communities are not respected enough to get to higher positions, and when we do get to high positions, we're considered displacable. You guys can take anything away from us easily because we don't have that same respect as our white peers, even though we work 10 times harder. I said this in the last meeting. And it's affected our whole community, and that's why young people are coming to every meeting now to prove our points, because we don't feel protected if our elders aren't protected. And I feel like that's everyone's responsibility in this room. Like, it's not, it's not up to us, like, young people, to keep coming and prove our points every week, but I think the next meeting will be in the school holidays, and I feel like you're going to have a lot of teachers to...
Answer to.
Pardon?
Answer to.
Yeah, you're going to have a lot of people to answer to, because right now, we're free because we're students and we're on holiday, so we can come and pressure you guys, but, yeah.
You know, I completely agree. It is all of our collective responsibility to make the changes that are needed, to make sure that everybody in this city is able to live the lives that they want freely without being discriminated against. And if that is not the case at the moment, then it would be, as it so clearly isn't, then it would be good to perhaps have a separate conversation with yourselves. We've got quite a long agenda today, but if we've got your contact details, maybe we could have a separate conversation about that. What I would say in general is that words alone are not enough here. I know that. Actions are what is needed, and so when we have that update about, you know, this council's progress towards meeting the recommendations of the Race Equality Commission, people are rightly going to hold us to account for our actions, not our words. So, I very much take that word.
Is the Race Equality Commission just a tick-box exercise? How can you really want to make a difference when senior education officers do not understand what discrimination looks like?
I think the words I've just sort of said a moment ago hopefully give you some comfort that it is not a tick-box exercise, and that, but words alone aren't enough, it is about actions. And so, when we come back together again on the 2nd of August, we'll be looking at an update report for the action plan that was agreed back in December last year, and our progress towards meeting those actions will be included on that.
When the Sheffield City Council is proven guilty in contributing to discrimination to POC teachers in leadership positions and not protecting them, will they publicly acknowledge their mistakes and apologise to our community and the specific teachers involved?
Were any wrongdoing have been proved to take place, then, of course, apologies would be given. What I would say, decisions about employees at schools are made by governing bodies and boards of trustees. That being said, Sheffield City Council wants to assure that any advice and support that it provides to schools is of the best quality, and we're always looking to do things better.
Sort of questions.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming. I really do appreciate you coming, taking the time out. This is not an easy thing to do, and yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you August the 2nd.
The next question is from Russell Johnson. And I understand that Ruth Hubbard is going to be asking the questions on behalf of Russell. And I should say, for everyone's benefit, that Ruth, you're going to be also asking questions on behalf of Justin Buxton, and you tabled a question yourself. So, we'll proceed through. If you want to, begin with the questions that you're asking on behalf of Mr Johnson.
These are the questions I'm asking on behalf of Russell Johnson. In recent meetings, since you became leader, myself and others have asked you about the disregard of the powerful motion passed at the ECM regarding the position of certain members following the excoriating LowCOP report. For some reason, you have not answered, therefore reworded, I'll make another attempt. If you and your party were committed to democratic processes in governance, both of the council and party, surely it follows that the members referred to in that motion should stand down. If you feel able to defend the continuing positions of the six members to whom the motion applies, please try to do so. Should I go on? Number two. I have also sought to explore the subject of this question recently. Again, you not only failed to answer, but willfully obfuscated. Here goes with another attempt, reworded for clarity and ease of comprehension. One, whilst they understand that there can be no compulsion, would it be desirable for the leader and the chief exec to publicly request apologies from appropriate former members and officers, taking responsibility for their culpabilities in the street tree scandal? If not, please explain properly, rather than insulting the questioner with obtuse non-answers. Number two, does councillor Hunt agree with me that the gesture with itself, even if there were nil response, helped to complement and enhance the general apology already published? Number three, Nolan advises thus, and there's a quote from the, I think it's from the Code of Conduct for Members, quotes, 'I do not bring my role or local authority into disrepute, and you should work openly and transparently.' One, do you accept that the Nolan principles should be a guide for council leaders? Two, do you accept that your recent performance responding to public questioners, i.e. failing to address the questioner's concerns, constitutes a clear breach of both of those principles? Three, do you agree with me that brazenly disregarding and dismissing a legitimately passed motion constitutes further Nolan contraventions, reaches the SCC members' code of conduct and undermines democratic principles? Four, will he arrange a meeting with me, that's Russell, and other members of the public whom he serves to discuss these important matters?
Thank you very much. I'll make sure that Mr Johnson gets the written answers sent, but let me answer these questions. So, to answer the first question, I mean, as Mr Johnson points out, this is a repeat of questions that I've answered a couple of times now. But what I would say is, following the extraordinary council meeting on... Um, but what I would say is, following the extraordinary council meeting on the 10th of May, the council's annual general meeting, which took place on the 17th of May, was held. And all positions for this year's municipal year were appointed properly, in line with the council's constitution and with the law. Appointments to the offices of Lord Mayor and Deputy Lord Mayor were made unanimously by the full council at the AGM. Turning to Mr. Johnson's second question. The council has apologised repeatedly over the last few months for the harms caused by the street trees dispute. There is a full and frank and comprehensive, open apology available on the council's website, co-signed by myself and the chief executive. I stand by all those apologies. The council as a whole and, and some members and officers who were in post at the time got things badly wrong. Haven't shied away from that at all. The inquiry that was set up held the council as an entity responsible for this. And this is the council as an organisation which has to learn, change and ensure that a dispute of this magnitude on any issue can never happen ever again. Ultimately, and this chimes with the answers I gave to the previous, um, questioners, the best apology that we can give to the people of Sheffield is, in the long term, is evidence that we've changed. We issued the words, but people rightly want to see action following up from that. That's why when the apology was issued on the 19th of June alongside it was an action plan setting out how we would be meeting in full all of the recommendations that Sir Mark made to the city council when he published the Lowcoq report. It's not for me, as somebody who, um, was not involved at the time, to demand apologies from any individual who's no longer part of Sheffield City Council. It's a matter purely for those individuals. In my role as leader, my task is to ensure that as an organisation, we move forward. We do so with openness, transparency, integrity, honesty. And that, as I said, the best apology we can give is evidence that we've changed. Words alone, not enough. They need to be matched by actions. On Mr. Johnson's questions around the Nolan principles, um, first part, do I accept that the principles should be a guide for council leaders and, and all councillors? Yes, I do. I don't accept that there's been a breach of those principles and I'm sorry that Mr. Johnson feels that way. I've answered the questions that have been put to me in public forums, which is this, to the best of my ability, with the best possible advice that's been provided to me about our actions. And no matter how difficult, I've always answered those questions. So I don't think there's a, um, a breach there. In response to his last question, I will always make myself available to the residents of Sheffield, as I have just done with the previous questioners. I don't think, as I said, there's been any contraventions of the Nolan principles from myself in this regard. And I wouldn't have anything further to add on that if Mr. Johnson wanted to meet. But I think and I hope that both Mr. Johnson and I will recognise that having kind of regular cycles of asking similar questions and receiving similar answers is probably not the most fruitful exercise for us both. If a meeting is a way to have a more fruitful conversation, and of course I would be happy to meet with Mr. Johnson. Thank you. And we have some questions from Mr. Buckston, which I think you're asking as well.
I mean, you guys could be reading these questions. I mean, I'll ask questions on anyone's behalf. But yeah, these are Mr., these are, these are Justin Buckston's questions. Number one, further to a question I asked at the full council meeting on 5th of July this year and the subsequent obviously deliberate obfuscation and conceit of the response. The spirit of failure to adhere to the spirit of the Nolan principles and an audacious display of an appalling and continued arrogant culture by the leadership, resulting in a public response perpetuating the democratic deficit that has plagued Sheffield and its governance. At the extraordinary council meeting held on 10th of May to consider the implications of the street tree inquiry on the city, S E C and councillors involved in the decision-making at that time, the following resolution was passed that the council believes that for individuals who are council cabinet members in the civic years 2015, 16 to 2017, 2018, resignation from public office would be an appropriate indication of acceptance of responsibility for harms caused, unquote. Please could the council specify and detail the democratic procedure followed and invoked to allow the intentional disregard of a previous democratic vote by the council when appointing a councillor to an official office when they were a member of the cabinet identified in the resolution quoted and passed previously? And question number two. Tom Hunt has previously stated on record, "It would not be accurate to describe the street tree replacement programme as either wholly policy or wholly necessary to carry out those statutory duties," unquote. This would confirm that the felling of healthy street trees was not wholly necessary to carry out statutory duties in all instances. Will the council be referring itself to the Forestry Commission regarding this matter in view of their investigation into the legality of the programme being severely hampered by identified failures in record keeping by the council and Amy, also bearing in mind the Lowcoq inquiry report that found that the council misled courts, the media and citizens?
Thank you very much. Um, in response to the first question, which again is relating back to the motion of the extraordinary council meeting of the 10th of May, um, for clarity, the motion passed at the extraordinary council meeting, um, referred to in Mr. Buckston's question was advisory and not binding on the elected member. And this is similar to the answer I gave to, um, Mr. Johnson. All offices for the 2023, 24 municipal year were appointed to properly, in line with the council's constitution and the law. Appointments to the offices of the Lord Mayor and Deputy Lord Mayor were made unanimously by the full council at the AGM on May the 17th. In response to the second question relating to the Forestry Commission, um, in line with the response to the inquiry report agreed by this committee on the 19th of June, the Sheffield City Council emailed the Forestry Commission with the council's full apology. And in that email, we drew their attention to the council's response to the inquiry. Should the Forestry Commission have any further questions or observation, we will of course respond to them. At the extraordinary council meeting, Sir Mark remarked that the street tree inquiry represented a comprehensive and thorough examination of all the evidence held regarding the street tree dispute. He warned against seeking to relitigate the work of the inquiry, which he believed would not be a positive step for the city. As I've said on a number of occasions, I agree with him on that point. Thank you. I believe you have some questions of yourself.
Yes, sorry, I just want to carry on. Um, my first question, I'm afraid it's another one about that motion. Uh, number one, please can you clarify the status of motions passed at meetings of full council and their binding nature on individual members of the council, political party groupings and the chief exec and other officers? Who is required and who is empowered to take action if motions passed in council and their direct implications are not followed through on? Or where decisions are then undermined by subsequent actions and/or appointments? What recourse do members of the public have in such instances? In respect of paragraph 12 of the motion passed at the ECM on May the 10th, what actions have been taken by members or party political groupings or by officers of the council to pursue or require the actions referred to in this paragraph? If the answer is none, then apart from bringing the council into disrepute or kind of undermining its own legitimacy, what are the implications? Um, my second question, on the 31st of May, Strategic Resources received a report on the strategic framework. Amongst other things, this introduces the Future Sheffield Programme and the S and R Committee set up a cross-party working group to oversee this. Clearly, brief bullet points listed as aspirations or outcomes are clearly wide-ranging and of public interest. Um, clearly Future Sheffield has ambition and I appreciate the council also probably wants this work to evolve and be responsive. There was a lack of information and clarity about how all this is intended to work, specific objectives and how they will be measured, for example. And once again, the public seemed to come at the very end of the food chain where it's imagined people might somehow tell you if it's working or not. As I say, I appreciate it will be evolving. Um, but there are, but are there lots of meetings happening behind closed doors? If so, how can that be made more transparent so that people know what's going on, can see who's involved, what's on the table and being worked on? How will reporting work, both to committees who all look, who look like they all will be affected? Um, and externally? Um, this is an ask for more information and clarity in the public domain. And three, in the annual meeting and in latterful council, the meeting received reports on member appointments to external bodies, boards and the like. These appointments are made to a whole range of organisations with different legal structures and so on, uh, but including to some in the voluntary and charitable sector. What guidance, rules or briefing do councillors receive about their appointments to external organisations, particularly in the voluntary and charitable sector? Uh, I found old guidance from 2012, but couldn't see anything later, nor anything that refers to this in the last ten years. Can you clarify the nature of these external appointments and reassure the public that they, nor in general terms, relationships with VCS organisations and groups are not, nor should be, used for party political influence or gain or to interfere with or compromise the rights and independence of those organisations? How would you know if inappropriate influence or interference was being exercised?
Thank you very much. Um, so the first question around, um, the status of, of motions. The, the role of full council motions is to discuss and debate issues of concern to the council. Um, as agreed in the constitution, they are advisory and non-binding in nature and can't commit the council to financial expenditure or create new policy. They are also not binding on any subsequent meeting of the full council. That's because council motions do not receive formal officer advice in the same way that a decision report, the kind that we'll be looking at today, um, receive. And because full council has decided that decision-making should be delegated to policy committees. Council motions are therefore advisory and will usually request that the relevant policy committee will consider the matter further with the full benefit of officer advice. That's true of this committee, S and R and any of the policy committee. Your second question, uh, again, referring back to the motion of the, uh, extraordinary council meeting on the 10th of May. Um, no action has been taken by council officers in respect of paragraph 12 of the motion which you mentioned. And again, I will kind of reiterate the point that Sir Mark, at that same meeting when the motion was passed, cautioned against the value of relitigating things that had happened in the dispute and that this would not move us forward. However, having now identified a range of lessons from the dispute that are laid out in stark detail from the Lowcoq report, the task now is to learn from them and to move forward as an organisation. Your second question was around the Future Sheffield Programme. Um, and it's, you know, really good to get questions about this. Um, it's the city council's programme for organisational development, improvement and change. The first phase of it is focused on a review and redesign of the strategic leadership and management of the authority and the final appointments to the structure are currently underway. As this phase of the programme reaches its completion, the focus has moved to development and implementation of actions resulting from things like the LGA peer review, which happened in the autumn last year, the street tree inquiry, the Race Equality Commission, which we've already been discussing today, and other reports which set out kind of key building blocks for how this organisation will, um, develop as we go forward. These are around things like developing a digital strategy, a new workforce strategy, a new approach to employee engagement. Works underway to develop these strategies alongside a new approach to performance management and public reporting. We're developing a medium-term financial plan and updates and draft documents will be available uh, through this committee at our autumn meetings covering this phase of the programme. As you've acknowledged in your question, Future Sheffield is ambitious, it's wide-ranging and it's going to evolve. Future phases of it will focus on how we transform this organisation and continue to improve closely aligned to the new city goals, which will conclude in that work in the autumn and the new corporate plan, which again, work is underway to prepare. The future phases of Future Sheffield will be more externally focused and some of our internal work, uh, some, some of our more, um, early and internal work. And we're currently in the kind of formative stages of that. Um, as well as kind of being led by senior officers, councillor, uh, Fran Bellman, deputy leader, will be the member lead for Future Sheffield and will be establishing a cross-party working group to take that forward. We'll be engaging committees with those proposals where they fall within the remit of that committee. And we expect that S and R and Cross Party Working Group will keep an overview of the development and progress that's being made. Uh, and we're looking to bring a report to S and R in November 2023. Uh, the final question you asked about the external appointments. Um, elected members are bound at all times by the council of code of conduct when they undertake any official duties as councillor. Members are required to operate in a way that's in line with the Nolan principles on standards and public life, free from bias, not seeking to use their position improperly on, uh, to the advantage or disadvantage of anyone else. This would include ensuring that members don't use those appointments for party political influence or gain or to compromise the rights and independence of those organisations. Members are required as always to disclose and register any interests that they might have. Were there to be any inappropriate, inappropriate influence, then it would of course be investigated as a standards matter if a complaint were made. And where members are appointed in a personal capacity, then they'll still be bound by the constitution and the rules of those organisations and we will owe them legal duties and will owe them legal duties rather. Any breaches would be a matter for those organisations. The latest guidance that you referred to, um, is the guidance from 2020, 2012. Uh, but I'll ask the governance committee to consider whether this should be placed on their work programme to review. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a question from Wal New.
Hi there.
Thank you. I have one question. During the period of the street, street tree scandal and the citizen-led change of governance petition and referendum campaigns, the ruling Labour group was elected with the support of less than 10% of the electorate. Decisions were forced on the city by secret votes only involving Labour councillors and requiring just a simple majority of councillors within the Labour group, i.e. decisions only needed, that needed the support of a faction of Labour councillors representing less than 5% of the electorate. The views of a large number of local Labour Party members all across the city were ignored when these decisions were made. Many Labour councillors were forced to support decisions they disagreed with, prevented from voicing their real views and prevented from carrying out the job they elected to do, properly representing the views of their constituents. Local Labour Party members were bullied into silence if they didn't agree with these decisions. We know that Labour councillors and members resigned because of the toxic way the Labour group was run during tree scandals. And we know that many Labour councillors and members disagreed with the decisions on the trees and its decision to campaign against the change to a committee system. During this period, a faction in Sheffield Labour Party forced illegitimate decisions onto the whole city. And Labour councillors, Labour Party officials and local Labour MPs broke the Nolan principles, bullied and made false statements to citizens, all without consequence or punishment. The rules and procedures of the Sheffield Labour Party allowed and encouraged these scandalous events to happen. Labour Party officials and councillors failed to properly police behaviour within their party. Labour councillors failed to, or felt they couldn't, put their democratic duty to their constituents before the factionism of their party. There was a failure of governance within the council, as has been acknowledged following the local report. But there were also fatal governance failures within the Sheffield Labour Party. There seems nothing to prevent these failings reoccurring unless real and concrete improvements are made to both organisations. Worryingly, Sheffield Labour, under the secret control of Labour head office, was very clear in this year's local election campaign that its aim is to regain an absolute majority in the council explicitly so that it can force its decisions through on its own, bypassing the democratic way of working within the committee system. Labour election adverts and Labour door knockers were both explicit about this. Unfortunately, it's very possible that the Labour Party could achieve this aim with a support of only 10% of the electorate. Given this, citizens would be rightly suspicious that statements by some in Sheffield Labour about its enthusiastic support for the committee system and having turned over a new leaf are rather meaningless without concrete changes to Sheffield Labour Party's rules and procedures and the rigorous policing of those rules that could actually prevent the disastrous and undemocratic failings from reoccurring. As I've heard you say a few times, words alone are not enough to give citizens the confidence that real change has been made. So my question is, what specific changes have been made to the rules and procedures of the Sheffield Labour Party, the Labour councillors' group and the Sheffield Labour constituency parties? And how those rules are placed to prevent these democratic legitimacy and governance failures from happening again? Thank you.
Thank you. I've been a councillor for just over a year. It is clear that mistakes were made in the past. They're laid out in very clear detail in the Low Cop report. What I can say is, I've promised that as leader of Sheffield Labour Group, it is a priority of mine to serve the people of Sheffield, to work collaboratively, to ensure that our politics is done in a competent, open and inclusive way. I've been clear on that from day one in this role. That's the way that I expect Labour councillors to conduct themselves internally and externally. Rules pertaining to the Labour Party are an internal party matter. On the committee system, it's the only system of governance in this place I know. I don't know the cabinet model. I've only been here whilst the committee system is here. I fully welcome it and I'm getting on with the job. I am embracing this as the way in which we are working now. Changing the governance model will always be a work in progress. And this is why the governance review is ongoing. We can continue to improve the way in which we do things. We've talked before about how committees could be doing more to involve the people of Sheffield in their work to make them more transparent and more inclusive. We will want to see the work done to the best of its ability and the governance committee will be taking a look at that. You asked a range of things in your question, Mr Newell, and the rules pertaining to the Labour Party are an internal party matter. Yep. Let me just answer the rest of your points. You asked a number of questions to do with the Labour Party's ambitions and... I'm about to give you something about Sheffield Labour Party. Which is that I'll be very clear that I want Labour to have a majority on this council. And I think it's important to be honest about this. And I'm sure that my cross-party colleagues will agree that they too are quite keen to win elections. I think you quite like to win elections. But let me provide assurance that the committee system means that whoever is in power and whatever arrangements they have to be in power, and we have a power-sharing arrangement at the minute with no overall control, all 84 councillors have a role in our governing arrangements. Thank you very much. The rules pertaining to Sheffield Labour Party are an internal party matter, Miss Newell. Lots of changes have been made, as you would expect, within Sheffield Labour Party. I won't go into that because this is a meeting of Sheffield City Council. Very, very welcome to ask the Labour Party. Thank you very much for your questions. Final questions today, we've got Mr Compaugh.
That one? Yeah. Try to be standing if you don't mind. Oh, maybe, I wanted to be very brief and short on my questions, but there's a few more things that came to mind during this meeting. I'd just like to bring to your attention that technically every organisation built post-colonialism has some form of institutionalised racism. So maybe I would suggest, in response to the girls here on the run, that it'd be a good idea to have a community officer that would be responsible to monitor the equanimity and equal chances within this council. Yeah. Furthermore, let me get my head right. You may also know that words and actions are not the same thing. And that's how integrity is being judged when actions are matching words. So this is the reason I'm still here and I'm going to keep coming until I get some form of integrity on what the council says. I also have actually a request because I do not want the answer to my question to be biased by someone from the Labour Party. I'd rather have some kind of neutrality on my answers. And I doubt that my answers, my questions are directed to you, but rather to the officers or anyone who has monitoring capabilities within the council. So, you did mention at the last meeting last week, Mr Hunt, that all members of the council are bound to honour the council's code of conduct. So, I feel like there are some discrepancies because sometimes you say that it's not legally binding and sometimes you say it's binding. So I'm a bit confused in regards to that. When you say that you want to make sure that the former mistakes can never happen again, it's great to have good intentions and fantasies, but it's not enough because, as you may know, there is a justice system in place that makes sure that through accountability, those mistakes can never have been done again. Because this justice system is important and is used to ward off any attempt to perpetrate such attitudes. So bear that in mind if you decide to answer my questions. As an introduction to these questions, I gather the following things in the public apology that you produced. But I'm sure that the public apology you produced was not just your working, but was also inspired by officers who recommended certain things within this apology. So rather than having an answer from you, I'd rather have an answer from people who can recommend advice. So here's what I gathered. The inquiry found serious errors of strategic leadership and wisdom of decision-making during this dispute. This is, I'm quoting the public apology. There was little openness to scrutiny and lack of use of guidance, good practice and consultation, which could have alerted the councillor Amy to major issues in the design and implementation of the original tree replacement programme. The council failed to communicate in an open and honest way, let misinformation enter the public domain and allowed it to remain there. Some of it is still there. Failing to consult, engage and listen to the public, experts and organisations. That's part of your public apology.
A number of questions that you tabled in advance. Would you be able to ask them, please?
I will ask them, yeah. I mean, I'm sure that you're expecting me to create a little friend round that. So it's more precise.
Of course. If you could move to your first question.
Yeah. So what I understand is that the council is now willing to... Is not willing to misinformation to remain in the public domain and that it is planning to consider an act on the fact that repeated breaches of the code of conduct were made. Because that's what is being said in your public apology. You're agreeing with that, aren't you?
Sorry, just say the question again, please.
What I understand is that the council is now not willing misinformation to remain in the public domain and that it is planning to consider an act on the fact that repeated breaches of the code of conduct were made, which is what you're saying in your apology.
Yes, mistakes were made, yes.
Good. Excellent. So mistakes as in breaches of the code of conduct.
I don't believe you're quoting from the apology there.
This is not, this is what I understand from it. If you're saying that mistakes were made and as I quoted, you know...
If I could ask you to move to the first question, that would be really helpful, thank you.
Okay. Yes, I will also do a quick request that the financial records are to be... I know that the financial records are to be constitutionally destroyed six years past the current year. So I believe that some evidence of mistakes may be in the financial records from 2016, 17 and 18. So if it's possible to actually keep these records and not destroy them after six years, because I believe that would be of public interest. So the questions. First, when would this council be willing to rectify the incorrect statements, like the misinformation that you mentioned, it had made at court during the trial against Alice Fairhall and others?
Okay. Do you want to ask your next question?
I'd rather have an answer from each question.
Okay. Well, what I can say then is, as agreed at the Strategy and Resources Committee meeting on the 19th of June, we've put in place a process by which anybody who has been affected by the Street Trees dispute can request an apology. And there's a process for making that happen. While the inquiry found the outcomes of legal action would have been the same without the council's version of the five-year tree management strategy, misleading the courts is a very serious matter for which we are apologising to the courts.
Misleading the court is a serious matter for me as well. Okay. And an apology to the court, I'm afraid, will not be enough because some misinformation that had been spread during this trial is still remaining. So you do understand that repairing the errors of judgements and the...
If we could perhaps ask you a second question, please.
Okay, okay. So this is why I don't really want answers from you because...
I mean, the process of tabling questions to Strategy and Resources is that as the chair of the committee, I provide the answers. Of course, those answers are informed by advice I receive from officers of this council, but it's me who is reading them at you today.
But I can make complaints about this too, which should be answered within three days.
Of course, you are perfectly entitled to make complaints.
Okay. Would this council, question two. Would this council be willing to examine the piece of evidence commissioned by this council itself? So this is actually in the public domain, supporting the above claim?
And as per my previous answer, this can be considered as part of the apology process.
I've got difficulties with that word apology. Like, I could have just apologised for breaching the injunction twice and I should have been okay. Isn't it?
Of course.
I expect the council to, you know, treat itself the same way.
Entirely legitimate to have that view, I understand that. As I've been consistent, apologies are not enough, but words matter. But words alone are not enough.
Words don't matter, it's actions that do.
The third question, please.
Is this council interested at all in bringing justice to the people it has wrong? And how and when? How is it planning to do that?
The council has issued a full apology for its actions during the Street Tree dispute and has put in place a mechanism for making apologies to individuals affected. We're implementing and have gone further than the inquiry's recommendations around writing off and repaying court financial orders. And we're committed to supporting the small number of people found in breach of the injunctions to help mitigate any ongoing challenges that they face. Together, we hope that these actions will demonstrate the council's remorse and go some way to providing justice for those who were affected by the actions of this council during the dispute.
I mean, you realise that I don't feel affected by that at all till now, right?
I understand that.
So I mean, the words that you're saying don't translate into actions because of... I'm still having to spend time just studying the code of conduct and all this. And I would rather just, you know, focus on my occupations, considering I'm working for three local charities. So my time has value for our community.
And your fourth question, please.
How does this council seek to commit to present member of the public for repeated breaches of an injunction, but does very little when members of this council commit repeated breaches of the code of conduct and of this council's own constitution?
We've been clear that the decision to seek injunctions against protesters and then bring committal proceedings was ill-advised. And it's something for which we've already apologised. And I will repeat that apology now.
Yeah, but...
Breaches of the code of conduct can and are investigated through the council's standards process.
So I will ask that this is properly investigated. Okay, so you do agree that an investigation is needed on this?
Very happy to have further conversation with you. If you want to make a further complaint, then that would of course, as we said, be investigated through the standards process.
I do have some formal complaints and they are already written in there. So I'm looking forward to have an appointment to put all these down. Now, on an appointment, I will need some form of monitoring. And I will also bring a witness, so I expect the council to bring witnesses too.
Okay. Thanks very much for coming to us.
May I ask for when an appointment would be meant?
I can't give you that information right now, but in consultation with colleagues, we can make sure that you get that information. And my colleague is saying he will be in touch with you this week. Wonderful. Thank you everyone.
Have a good day.
It's today. That is the end of our public questions today. And we will now move on to the next agenda item, which is the retirement of staff. And as you see in the report that is before us, there are a number of very longstanding members of council staff who are retiring. And there are recommendations in here for us to approve, which are to acknowledge their contribution to the work of this local authority and to thank them for their efforts. And I think we can all wish them a very happy retirement. Are we all agreed with the recommendations in the... Are we all agreed with the recommendations in the report? Thank you very much, everybody. And the next item is our work programme and I'm going to ask Craig to just say a few words about this. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, Chair. Members have got a copy of the latest updated work programme in the pack. It starts on page fifty-three. You'll recall this was presented in detail at the last meeting on the twenty-eighth of June. There's not much changed in there, but there are two changes to report and one specific approval that I will mention. So there's a, a proposed addition to the second of August meeting, which was referred to earlier in respect of the Rate Equality Commission one-year update. And then subsequent to the agenda being published, there will, uh, members will be aware, there are a number of council motions that have been agreed, uh, which will require addition to the work programme or work through those with officers and include those in the next report. And then the item requiring your formal approval is on a couple of cross-cutting issues on page fifty-seven and you're being asked to formally, um, give those, sorry, have those considered at adults and at finance.
Thank you very much, Craig. Um, uh, is everybody happy with the recommendations for the work programme as, um, uh, updated by Craig there? Douglas, councillor Johnson.
Thanks. Just one observation on page fifty-six, got priority issues which are really helpful. The obvious missing theme is all the stuff that we're working around, around net zero, the commitments that we've given to deal with climate change. And I know that will be incorporated in some way into the corporate plan, the strategic framework. But I do think we should probably have, um, the, the, our set of collective commitments around that zero to be recorded on as a priority issue.
Okay, thank you. We can certainly take a look at that. And I think, you know, we all know that, you know, that is a top priority for, for all of us. Tackling the climate emergency is, um, is, is shared, uh, cross-party in this chamber as a top priority. So that's noted. Thank you. With that, um, comment from councillor Johnson, are we happy to approve the work programme? Brilliant. Thank you, colleagues. Right, and item eight, we have a report which is entitled Supporting the People of Sheffield Through the Cost of Living Crisis. And, uh, he's on the move at the moment, but James Henderson will be presenting the report. Thank you very much for all joining us. And perhaps before we go into the report, you could just introduce yourselves for us, for the benefit of ourselves, but also people who may be watching this.
Thank you. So I'm James Henderson. I'm Director of Policy and Democratic Engagement.
I'm Cat Arnold. I'm a Policy and Improvement Officer.
I'm Hannah Wilson Smith. I'm Lead Coordinator in the Cost of Living Support Hub.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. So we're here today to present the, um, report that's before you about the cost of living crisis. And the report, uh, seeks to gain your, uh, approval for, um, the strengthening and continuation of the work that the city council has been doing around the cost of living crisis over the last year. So the paper sets out the approach that we have taken. So members of the committee, uh, may recall that, uh, in the early part of last summer, we, uh, the committee set a strategy for responding to the cost of living crisis as it was then emerging. And they developed and agreed an action plan to take that forward and also agreed, um, some, some incident response arrangements to support the delivery of the overall response. And that included the establishment of a strategic group, um, chaired by the leader of the council, but involving members from all parties alongside, um, representatives from other parts of the public sector, the private sector and the voluntary community and faith sectors. So it was intended to be a whole city response. The paper sets out the work that has been done by that group, um, since that was agreed. And over the last year, that has included, um, the disbursement of over, um, twenty million pounds to people in need of urgent and crisis support across the city. It has included the establishment of a hundred and seventy-three welcome places, both provided, uh, through the city council, so libraries and family centres and provided by, uh, partners within the voluntary community and faith sectors. It's included the development of a toolkit and resources for frontline workers who have been, um, dealing with the, um, with the impact of the cost of living crisis amongst the people that they work with. Has included, um, additional investment in, in, in increasing access to affordable food and has also resulted in securing, um, two point six million pounds worth of shared prosperity fund for further work on the cost of living crisis. What we have seen in the intervening period is the nature of the cost of living crisis change, but not go away. So energy inflation, um, which was the primary driver last year, um, has slowed down, although energy bills, uh, remain very high in comparison to, uh, previous levels. But we've seen a shift towards, um, rapidly increasing food inflation and mortgage interest rates as well, which is fueling, as the report notes in the words of citizens' advice, a looming debt crisis as well. So the, the cost of living crisis isn't going away. And this report therefore seeks the committee's approval to continue with, um, our response arrangements for the forthcoming year, to, uh, continue with the, uh, strategic and operational arrangements that I've described and to strengthen those, um, and to take forward additional work to support the people and communities of the city around the cost of living crisis over the coming years, over the coming year, I should say. That includes further development of the welcome places, um, to further meet the needs of, of communities. There has been a further four hundred thousand pounds allocated to local area committees to support local work on the cost of living crisis and to take forward the One Routine project, which is aimed at simplifying access to crisis support across the various schemes that the council, um, has in place, of things like, um, council tax support, local assistance scheme and so on. Additionally, um, the paper proposes, um, work to consider, uh, the wider impact of long-term, uh, poverty and inequality. And that's work that needs to be developed over the course of the year, particularly given that some of the funding is not guaranteed, uh, to continue, uh, beyond the end of this year as it stands, uh, currently. So, um, some, some further work to be done there. The final thing I'd like to say before I close is that the full council, um, agreed a motion last week, which was just too late for inclusion, uh, within this paper, to look at additional, or to ask the Strategy and Resources Committee to look at additional funding for advice and for local area committees, but with the recommendation that the strategy group, um, uh, consider that for making a final decision on it. So I just wanted to reassure members that that has been, uh, considered as well. So the recommendations are set out in the paper. Thanks very much, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. Um, okay. I'm going to take councillor Leverie first, because I saw his hand got first, and then councillor Argenzio. Councillor Nas, can I see if anyone else would like to speak in this? Okay. Yeah, all right. First three then, councillor Leverie, councillor Argenzio, councillor Nas.
Thank you, Chair. Item one twelve about the, the welcome places, the hundred and seventy-three. We had this in place last winter. Do we have any idea what the take-up was of the hundred and seventy-three places and the attendance, please?
I'll take questions, I'll take the three and then you can come back on them together. Councillor Argenzio.
Some more, sorry. So, um, and second question on that one was, as you quite rightly said, there's changed, things are moving from energy to food, has been a key issue. Is that going to change the strategy in terms of welcome places? And then on one fifteen, about the two posts, a hundred and sixty K for a VAS bid writer, which seems quite high. And a hundred and twenty-five K for a volunteer coordinator for citizens' advice. Again, could you give a bit more of an explanation on those finances, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Argenzio.
Yes, thank you very much for your report and I really welcome the kind of, um, I really welcome it, as, um, even at this time of year, I am getting requests for people who are really feeling the pinch. And I want to say that the team have been amazing, you know, when people have got in trouble. I've just had to do one email and people have been on it straight away and have been very helpful. I think what I am finding from my experience with my constituents is that, um, debt is mounting and people are ignoring their energy bills because, uh, it might be people who have several problems and they are, um, in a crisis situation with something that is a lot bigger than paying their gas or electrics. And therefore debt advice would be really, really helpful, uh, for those people. And, uh, I think next winter it might be worse actually than now because, because mortgages going up and, uh, food prices are just astronomical. I think, um, yeah, it's really good that we're doing this, but I think it's going to be a much bigger problem than what we've had because things are not getting any better, they're getting worse for families who have other issues to deal with that are more pressing, like their mental health or their children getting in the right school and getting the right support. So, um, you know, the, the energy bills and paying rent might be not as high on the priority list. So it's like, you know, you know, multiple issues for people. But the team at the, our council have been, for the case work that I've handed over, they've been fantastic. So thank you for that.
Councillor Nas.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I have a comment and a couple of questions, if that's okay. Chair, first of all, um, I wanted to share my gratitude to James and all the officers who have collectively worked on this to tackle the cost of living crisis. It's clear that we have a lot more work to do, but I want to give a mention to Emma Taylor from the Cost of Living Hub. I recently met Emma at a refugee awareness event at South Yorkshire Housing Association. It's great to see our team out in the communities, on the front line, using different methods of engagement and particularly in disadvantaged communities to support the most vulnerable in our neighbourhoods. So thank you for that. I've also invited the team to Tinsley to speak to my JI group. And I'm also been referring people in from the Darnall Food Bank that I, um, volunteer at. So thank you for all that support. So I've got a couple of questions. Um, I've been, I've been made aware that staff within the council are calling the helpline due to their own personal struggles. Could I ask what processes we have set up internally within the council to support staff who are suffering as a result of the cost of living crisis? Also, um, for example, um, I was at the RIPS building this morning and I noticed, um, they had free sanitary travels, uh, in the loose. And we don't have them in the town hall or, and I'm not sure whether we have them in other council buildings, but something like that would be really useful. Also on page seventy-four, um, regarding the distribution of twenty million. I'd just be really interested to see a breakdown by ward or lack level, if possible, just so that we can identify where there are gaps. And, and, and if there are gaps, as local councillors, we can help spread the word. And point one, point fourteen, um, on page seventy-four, around access to affordable food. The reason we set up the food bank in Darnall, um, during the pandemic was people weren't able to get halal food or culturally appropriate food. And I think that's really important to kind of flag up when food banks are buying food in, in, in large amounts to kind of think about culturally appropriate food. Because I've referred people onto other food banks, but they, they keep coming back just because the food isn't the types of food that they are cooking at home. And I know last year we mentioned a, a phone app for warm and space. So it was a warm and space app that I think was being developed. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering, um, in regards to where we are with that because that will just help people access information about welcome spaces, um, as well. Yeah, I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Uh, do you want to pick points from the first three? And then after that, I've got, uh, I've seen four people who want to indicate. So keep your answers relatively brief if you can.
I will, okay. Um, welcome places take up, it depends on what the welcome place is. Some of them have been in the communities for a long time and so they have people every day, you know, or regularly. Some of the welcome places came on board as a result of the cost of living crisis. We've had a survey to them in order to understand what the take-up is and I can send the information to you from that survey. The second question, um, the VAS, the, um, to help with bid writing volunteer coordinator. Again, we can get you more information about that. That's about addressing the sustainability of the voluntary sector, which we know is a real issue in the city. And we know that, um, for example, the volunteer coordinator, that's about getting as much resource into the, um, into the cost of living crisis as we can, as we can find. Obviously, as we all know, volunteers actually take a lot of resource to look after, train up and make sure that they're really enjoying their time as well as helping people in the city. But we'll get you more information about that. Debt is mounting, yes. Debt is really mounting. We've definitely highlighted that, um, in the work that we've been doing to try to understand how, what we expect to come over the next year. And, uh, we are definitely taking it into account in terms of, of our response. We know, so the debt, um, provision in the city is provided by the government via an arms-length government organisation. And that has reduced, and we know that that has reduced at the same time as the debt is going up. So we're absolutely looking at that, um, as part of our response. People in the council haven't contacted the helpline, didn't know about that. But we can get a response on what we're doing as a council, we are doing, we do have, that's one of the work streams as part of the cost of living response is how we're responding as employers. And we are also in the first, early stages of developing outside of cost of living, but it is related to that, a poverty and manopause, um, charter. And part of our response to that as a council is to provide, um, free sanitary products. I don't know why it's not everywhere. I will find that out for you as well. Twenty million breakdown by ward and lack level. I'm going to leave that, um, to be picked up. Yeah.
We can do that, please.
Brilliant. We have been looking at all of that in terms of trying to understand Household Support Fund, which is coming up next. Halal food and culturally appropriate food, yes, that's definitely come up, um, in the stuff that we've, um, that we have, we have relationships with, um, with food banks and, and obviously we, it's about, it's about building our relationships with them rather than dictating anything. I can find out some more information about what conversations I've had about that because that's definitely come up before and is a real issue. And I don't know what happened to the phone app. Um, do you?
No, we can definitely get an update on that.
Forgot about it until you mentioned it. All the information that was going to be on that phone app is available on the VAS website. So that information is already out there and we are pushing it via our communications regularly. That would be an extra thing, but it would be a bonus rather than, um, extra information.
Actually, I just had on debt as well, that's something that came out of the survey, welcome places. They highlight that as, as a need that they'd identified and we will be working with, with individual welcome places to do that sort of locally support based on local demand. And also one respondent as an employer, we've recently completed a procurement process for a new employee financial advice and wellbeing products and low-cost financial products for employees, which will be available soon. And we also, there's. and low-cost financial products for employees which will be available soon. And we also, there's information on the internet for employees as well around the cost of living. There's a whole section on the internet.
Can I just add one, one final point, just in addition, on the point that councillor Leary raised on the post 1.15. The amounts quoted there are not solely for salaries. So I just wanted to make that, that clear. There's for the additional work that needs to go around those. So I just wanted to make that clear for people. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. I've got, in the order that I saw, councillors Smith, Williams, Mohammed and then Bellbin. Is anyone else? If not, I'm going to draw a line there. Right, councillor Smith.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted, and some of my questions have already been answered. I just wanted to pick up on the extra, I think it was £600,000 that was debated and voted at full council last week. Are we progressing that with the appropriate level of urgency? Mindful of what councillor Hunt said earlier on about the need to, we've got to get some advice, we've got to feed it into the work programme. You know, the word crisis is in there and we haven't got a date for when we're going to do that. I completely agree with the need. So when is it going to happen, please? Thank you.
Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of comments stroke questions. One of my concerns is that people are beginning to almost imply that the energy issue is over. And it concerns me because we dodged a bit of a bullet last winter because winter, apart from the two weeks in Stanington, was pretty mild. And it makes a difference. But there's going to be a point where you don't, you won't be able to, if we have a very cold winter, you just won't be able to put enough sweaters on. It does concern me that that's drifting off the radar a bit and I hope that certainly within our own systems it isn't. Secondly, the increased mortgage rates brings in a whole new groups of people. It's clearly people in renting in the private sector because I suspect landlords will not absorb the mortgage increases, they'll merely pass them on. And yes, if you're struggling for food, you can eat a bit less, you can go to a food bank. But if you can't afford to pay the rent, you can't just move out. That's going to affect a lot of people. Secondly, it's homeowners who are facing increased mortgages. And my concern with this is that these are people who potentially aren't on any list within the council. And one of the things that last year's cost of living crisis worked very well was communication with the people who needed it most. Are you confident that we can do that again with this new group of people to make sure that they know where they can go for help? Because the government has been incredibly wishy-washy in talking about, oh, the mortgage companies will bail out and stuff like that. We know how mortgage companies work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Howard.
I think councillor Williams has taken one of my questions, which was that new groups of people are going to appear on the radar and obviously it's often in areas that on paper don't look like there are areas of need, but will come up. So just backing up what councillor Williams said, the mortgage increases are going to hurt a lot more people and often those that probably never turn to the council for help. So we need to be on the lookout for that. And the other area that's concerning me is about businesses. Because businesses, we talk a lot about individuals and households, but businesses, and if you look at 1.18 paragraph, there's not much that's in there. And particularly if you go to page 115 and talks about, talks about business deaths. Basically means business that are failing. It's concerning that there seems to be a spike in the final quarter of last year and whether that's continuing this year. We just need to be mindful about how we can support businesses as well in this cost of living. And the final area for me is around homelessness. Just a question actually. Because on the paperwork that we've got here, your dashboard, it says that homelessness may not have noticeably increased. But my understanding is that a housing committee last month, and maybe Douglas can comment on this, that I think the report there was that there's 500 more people presented themselves in 22 or 23 than the previous year, so reflecting demands. So which one is it? Is it the report to Douglas's committee or what you've got there? Or are we looking at different things that I can't see how you are? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Bellbin.
Thank you, Chair. Just to respond first of all to councillor Smith's question around the £600,000. I think as we did discuss at the full council last week, that needs to be discussed with all the partners who are involved in this work and certainly through the Cost of Living Strategy Group, which is a cross-sector group which does involve some of the organisations that I think it was proposed to spend some of that money on. They do attend that group. Our next meeting for that is scheduled, is going to be in September, so we can take forward that proposal there. I think some of the other funding that was proposed was for local area committees. And I know certainly we discussed in a lack of chairs meeting this week how useful it was to put that money into local area committees at this point. And I think that needs quite a bit further discussion. It was felt that we've already got the 400, which has only just been allocated across the different local area committees. We've only just worked out how that allocation will work. So it needs quite careful planning really, how, we're using any additional funding, the existing funding and any additional funding to best effect. The point that I really wanted to raise was around some of the questions around sustainability and that potential cliff edge we may be approaching at the end of this financial year when potentially a lot of the existing financial support may drop off. I'm very conscious, I won't say a big thank you to all our officers who have been involved in this work, but also if we can put on that record a huge thank you to all those staff and volunteers in the voluntary sector and community sector who have been providing massive amounts of support for this work. And many of them have not had lots of extra funding to do this. They've had bits and pieces. And as we know, in the voluntary sector, a lot of them are, you know, don't know where next year's funding is coming from because it's funding bid after funding bid. So I think actually that funding for consultants by the Shared Prosperity Fund to really support voluntary sector organisations to get funding on a more sustainable footing is really, really important. I'm really pleased that we've, that we've put that in. That's really, that's really welcome. And I do think it's important that in that Cost of Living Strategy Group, we increasingly focus on that potential cliff edge. What we don't want to do is put more and more short-term funding in place and then find that organisations have an even bigger drop when it gets to March or when it gets to next year. I do appreciate we've got a really tough winter to get through first and totally agree we should still be treating this as a crisis situation. That is constantly in flux as well, as people have mentioned, food prices, energy prices, none of this can we be certain over, over the, over the winter. So I think that the way forward is by working really, really closely, as we have been doing, with those frontline workers who are directly working with the people most affected, with the people with the lived experience of this. And that, you know, day by day, we are listening to what they are saying, that we are taking decisions together and not trying to impose decisions on them.
Thank you everybody. Colleagues.
Yeah, thank you. So just in response to those, I think councillor Bellbin has perhaps picked up the question from councillor Smith about the £600k that was discussed at the full council. But we will make sure that that is considered by the strategy group at the next meeting that they have so that can be progressed with, as you say, the appropriate level of urgency. In response to councillor Williams' point, I would fully agree the energy crisis isn't over. And I wouldn't want to give any impression that it was. Energy bills are remaining extremely high in comparison to historic levels. And what it looks as though we will see is that energy crisis is going to be combined with the issues around food inflation and mortgages and so on that will have a sort of a broader impact for households making resulting in some very difficult decisions potentially. And I think the work of the Stratton Operational Group needs to very much take that into account. In terms of the, the impact of the mortgage and interest rate increases, we've identified in the paper that private rented sector tenants in particular may be particularly affected over the course of this year. As you say, there is the knock-on particularly for tenants of smaller landlords who may be more dependent on mortgage properties and those costs having to be, or whenever you have them to be, to be passed on and the impact that that may have. So that's a key group of people that we will need to work with during the, during the course of the year. And similarly, as you say, with people who own the homes with mortgages at the moment, a group that we've probably spent less time with and we're going to have to think very carefully about how we engage with them. And we're going to have to rebase the communication strategy to enable us to do that, working with different, different groups of people. But the paper does set out those groups that we think are likely to have the biggest impact and that's where we would propose to focus our time. In relation to the, to the point that councillor Mohammed made about businesses, yes, clearly that is, that is, that's a big concern. It has been a big concern, the, the rise in cost of business and the relative lack of government support for businesses compared to residents. There is a lot of activity going on, perhaps the paper slightly underplays it, both through our business Sheffield service and the, and the offices that they have working directly with businesses across the city. But there's also been a really good response from the business community themselves. They've played a key role within the, within the strategy group and including through organisations like Business in the Community, supporting that work more widely. We are more limited in terms of funding that we've got available to us in terms of how we can use that with businesses. So I think that's an area that we will need to do some more work on. Cat Hannah, do you want to address anything in relation to the homelessness data or is that something we need to come back to, to members on? So yes, I don't understand that at the moment, but we can, we can come and look at that.
Yeah.
Final point, I think, was the one that councillor Bellbin made around voluntary community sector in the city. Yes, the voluntary community sector have been absolutely fundamentally important to the, to the work that has been done. And they have stepped up and worked in new ways with different organisations and have been really leading the response across the city. But they are organisations, as we know, under very significant financial strain themselves and that's something that we're aware of. As we've noted, there is shared prosperity funding that's going in to support that. But we will continue working with voluntary community sector to seek to ensure that they are able to continue to provide that, that support going forward. Thank you.
Thank you ever so much. And thank you, as has already been noted, for the work that you, your team have done to support people over the last year and will continue to do so over this year and what will no doubt be a difficult winter ahead. And thank you for the work that you're doing with partners. And councillor Bellbin's right to acknowledge the enormous contribution of our voluntary community sector partners. I think, you know, listening to this and reading the report, it's often worth reflecting upon the way in which the very term cost of living crisis implies that somehow this is natural, just part of daily life, just cost of life, part of our everyday life. It's not, nothing, it's nothing natural or normal about this. Choices have been made to get us to this point. Choices were made to cut universal credit by £20 after the first lockdowns. Choices are made to scale back support for businesses by government. Choices are made not to tax the oil and gas giants in the way that they could be in order to help people with their energy bills. We have taken decisions as this authority to do what we can to support people and we are taking further decisions today to do what we can to support people over this coming winter. We have a number of recommendations before which set out how we will be seeking to support people through this ongoing crisis. And, you know, I think we, everyone has those recommendations in front of us. And do I see support for those recommendations? Brilliant. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, thank you ever so much. We are now moving on to agenda, agenda item nine, which specifically refers to the Household Support Fund. And a colleague has joined us to present the report. If you could just, for the benefit of everyone here, particularly for people who may be watching, introduce yourself and then outline what's in the report, please.
Yes, no problem. Hi, everyone. I'm Alex Westron. I'm a service manager in the Cost of Living Support Hub and I'm responsible for direct support, so the grants that we deliver, including the Household Support Fund. Yeah, so I'm here today to bring proposals and recommendations relating to the Household Support Fund spending plan for the period covering April 23 to March 24. We were last here in April to gain approval to accept the fund and members endorsed the plan to go away and carry out cohort analysis to guide the spending plan whilst maintaining the status quo until this meeting. We've now carried out that piece of work and the report is included in the circulated papers. And we're bringing for approval the delivery plan which sets out how we can deliver funds to those that need it most based on that analysis and taking into consideration the Household Support Fund scheme guidance. So the purpose of the report is to update Strategy and Resources Committee on the Cost of Living Cohort Analysis, including findings on cohorts most affected by the cost of living crisis and financial inequalities as requested by committee in April 2023, to seek this committee's approval to spend the Household Support Fund from DWP in line with the spending plan detailed in this report and guided by the findings of the, of the analysis, to seek the committee's approval to make changes to the application scheme as detailed in this report and to inform the committee of future considerations and decisions that would need to be made should the Household Support Fund grant be discontinued in March 2024. So the cohort analysis that's been carried out has found that following groups disproportionately impacted by the cost of living crisis. So that is people on low incomes, people on benefits, families with children, people with disabilities and long-term health conditions, young people, unpaid carers, people from diverse communities and tenants in private rented accommodation. And then from within those groups, we've identified the groups that are most impacted and who are likely to have not received financial or other support from elsewhere. And those groups are families with more than two children, lone parents, families with children under five, under-25s living alone, unpaid carers and private rented tenants. So the recommendations that we've brought to you today are based upon those findings and ensuring that the money that we have available goes to those that need it the most. So in terms of the targeted support, that we deliver the Household Support Fund in two ways, via targets for, where we make direct payments to people and via a reactive scheme, which is the, the application element of the scheme. So in terms of targeted support, this report proposes a continuation of the support given to families with children by providing payments to those in receipt of free school meals in school holidays. We propose that the voucher amount remains the same as previous levels, which is £15 per week and £50 to cover the summer holiday period. And that would total £4.62 million of the funds available. The cohort analysis also enabled us to understand where impacted groups that are already receiving support. And then in line with HSM scheme guidance, we've identified a group who've not received support from elsewhere but are seen as impacted. So the report proposes a one-off hundred and twenty-five pound payment to residents who are in receipt of housing benefit and or council tax benefit, which are means tested, but not in receipt of other means tested benefits. And therefore, as a result, have been excluded from receiving cost of living payments in 23, 223 and 2324. So the value of that award in total will be £789,500 and the payment would be made at the start of winter to help with the financial and psychological burden of looking to pay energy bills through the winter period. Then moving on to the reactive element, so this is the application part of the scheme. It's proposed that £4 million be set aside to deliver the application scheme, which is in line with spending on previous application schemes and in line with the current forecasting for the spend for that scheme. Changes are proposed to the scheme to remove the evidence burden for groups who are disproportionately impacted, and as a result, speed up the delivery of payments from the point of application to those most in need. We also propose that impacted cohorts are provided with a higher award value by providing an uplift to people who will fall within those groups identified as most impacted and therefore likely to have less financial and other support. The current system of assessing applications by evidence in hardship will be maintained for those that don't fall into an impacted cohort, so those on low incomes, those who own their own properties, things like that. So nobody's excluded from applying. And then for those on means-tested benefits and those who fall into disproportionately impacted cohorts, hardship will be evidenced by using data that we already hold, so things like benefits data. So payment will be received quicker as we can make a decision quicker ultimately. These changes will undoubtedly increase the number of people eligible, which in turn will impact the cost of the scheme. And so to mitigate that, we propose that payments are restricted to four per year, which is reflected in the way that other councils deliver the fund. But then to ensure that the fund goes to those who need it the most, the baseline award would be reduced, but then with uplift being provided per impacting factor. So to give an example of how that might work in practice, so a single-person family with more than two children, where at least one child is under five and they're living in private rented accommodation, would receive four enhancements to their award, which would take that above the current average value of an award. So that just allows us to target to the groups that we found in cohort analysis that are more impacted and sort of rebalance it in favour of those groups. So that's the change that we propose to the reactive element. There's one other sort of spending proposal that we've got, and that's to ring-fence an amount of the fund. So the report proposes that we ring-fence £700,000 to the Director of Communities in order that the council can respond in an agile way to issues as they emerge, as, for example, you know, if we saw that there was an impact to those who own their own properties, it'd allow us to respond if we thought that they consider an analysis needing support, then we could do that. We've seen over the last year that groups can emerge that miss out on schemes such as energy support, and this amount could be used to support those groups. Another option would be to top up the application scheme if demand exceeds the amount that we've got available, or we could use the fund to support the aforementioned cohorts if either of those two options were not required. And then just in terms of other support, so we acknowledge that there are communities and cohorts that have been identified by the analysis that are perhaps in receipt of support from elsewhere or that it's not easy to target support at. So to ensure that these groups know the support that we can offer and assist them to access the support available, we'll provide support to community and voluntary sector organisations to enable them to assist their communities while carrying out targeted communications in diverse communities and engagement with those communities to assist people where barriers may exist, will increase the number of trusted assessors and organisations that we work with, for example, advice centres, food shelters, welcome places, et cetera, and make it easier for those trusted assessors to support their clients and communities to access the fund. Yeah. And then, yeah, just moving on to recommendations based on the information that I've just provided. So it's recommended that Strategy and Resources Committee approve the spending plan for free school meals for 2023/24 as detailed in the report, approves the targeted award to households who are in receipt of housing benefit and/or council tax support but not in receipt of other benefits and therefore have not received the cost of living payment from the government, approves the spending plan and changes to the grant application scheme as detailed in the report, approves the ring-fenced amount of £700,000 that will be used in the period from July 23 to March 24 to respond flexibly to cost of living issues, and delegates authority to the Director of Communities in consultation with the Director of Finance and General Council to make decisions on spending this money. And then also notes, the Household Support Fund ends in March 2024 with no guarantee that it will be extended beyond this point. We may need to plan for what happens when that support ends, particularly in the case of free school meal vouchers in school holidays, the council have supported families in this way since the start of the pandemic.
Thank you very much indeed for rilling us through that analysis that you've done and the recommendations that that has led to. We've got a number of colleagues who've indicated to speak. I've got councillor Argenzio, Mohammed, Williams and Jones. Conscious of time, so can I just see if anyone else would like to speak? Councillor Nas and councillor Bellbin, okay. And then I'm going to draw a line under that if there's no one else. Okay, so I'll take it in two batches of three. Councillor Argenzio, councillor Mohammed, councillor Williams.
Thank you, and thank you for the report, and thank you for coming back and bearing with us, you know, with allocating the funds in the way that we wanted. So thank you very much, and thank you to your team for all the support to my constituents over the last few months. I'm wondering whether, and thank you also because people have been really accommodating in ringing people who have been too stressed to do the application online, and I think lots of people who are at a crisis point find having to take responsibility to do adminiating really hard, and your team have been incredibly accommodating in ringing people back and doing the applications with them. But I wonder whether it's an automatic thing when people, when families are in receipt of any kind of extra benefits, whether we check if they are actually in receipt of all the benefits that they're entitled to? Because we know that there is an under kind of investment in Sheffield in terms of housing, you know, in terms of benefits in general, and whether that is automatic. And I know that, you know, when I've requested, people have signedpost my constituents to the right people and they've had calls back. But I wonder whether we do it automatically all the time so that we get as much money where it's needed, that is coming from central government and therefore into the Sheffield economy? And if that is something that happens straight away, so is someone who applies for any, you know, that was entitled to any of this money, do we automatically check that they're getting everything that they're entitled to?
Councillor Mohammed.
Firstly, I just want to start by thanking you and your team. I mean, obviously, we make the policy decisions, but actually, the people who will get the money into people's pockets and, more importantly, food, particularly in school voucher, you guys. So I'm sure everyone, as Strategy and Resources want to personally thank you and your team, Alex, and if you take that back, it's greatly appreciated. My question follows from Angela's because of the debate we had last week at full council where we talked about how much monies Sheffield could get. And I think the estimate that we came up with through research that Dylan had done is that Think Tank Policy in Practice has said something in the lines of about £154 million. You know, these are benefits that people are entitled to, but for whatever reasons aren't getting. And the thing I want to kind of ask you is about those who present themselves to us in the hubs, how much help can we give to them, particularly our benefits such as council tax support? That's kind of within our gives. How much of that can we make sure it goes out the door to those people and what work can be done? And whether any extra monies are required via to build capacity? Let's be honest, that kind of motion last week that we discussed and agreed to, in my view, can be a bit flexible, the £200k. That was my understanding, but you know, colleagues might have other reasons. Whether we need maybe beef that up because ultimately it's advice, isn't it? Advice and accessing benefits, so whether we could do that. And then there's a bit of a technical question on page, I think it's 129, 2.8, where you're proposing to limit the awards to four a year. I read the rationale behind it. What I just need to get from you is, how many people have had more than four awards in the last year? So how many people are going to be disappointed or will not be supported? And then I was going to make the point that you've made in your report about the fact that this comes to an end, end of this financial year, free school meals in particular being going on, these vouchers for a while now. And it's a challenge probably to the committee rather than to you, which is, what is our city's response if we don't get any more money? And should we start to build that into our budget assumptions of, as a safety net? Maybe not to the same levels, but it's just a point I was going to make.
Thank you, councillor Mohammed. If colleagues keep questions, if possible, as closely related to the contents of the report as possible, then that means Alex is able to address them. For wider cost of living issues, I'll ask James Henderson to pick up on some of those points, and maybe Lorraine can as well. Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair, I'll be brief because I'm following on from previous comments. I found the table on page 142 very interesting because it demonstrates the massive capacity there is for claiming more benefits. Really, are we doing as much as we can to aid people in getting the money they're entitled to?
Thank you. Okay, do you want to pick up those first three? Then there's three more questions, and I will ask colleagues in the second set of questions to be brief if they can. Alex.
Sorry, yeah. So just in response to Angela's question, and thank you for everybody's positive feedback, which is really, you know, really welcome, and I'll pass it on to the team, as they're the ones who carry out the difficult work. In terms of benefits and whether we automatically help people to claim everything that they're entitled to, we've been building this process for about six months. At the minute, we ask everybody whether they want support to go through this process. So everybody who applies to either Household Support Fund or the LAS Crisis Grant Scheme will be invited to go through a benefits maximisation appointment, and we'll set that with them and we'll run through it. We aim at expanding that and increasing capacity based on some other technical changes that we've got happening in the background, so we're going to be, we'll be improving the application process, which reduces some of the administrative burden on our team, which we plan on refocusing that resource. It essentially halves the amount of time that it takes to deal with an application. So that resource will be focused on benefits maximisation work, and we'll try and improve, try and increase appointments based on that. There's also, we're looking at ways that we can increase the uptake of benefits that the council manages itself, so obviously council tax support, and looking at those links between sort of the information that we collect as part of crisis grant applications and then all the processes within the council that could assist somebody to apply for council tax support, for example. And we'll be looking at carrying out a piece of work, sort of carrying a pilot out, how we could transfer that over in the coming months.
It's also worth noting that our frontline workers...
Lorraine, do you want to stick the microphone?
Sorry, I thought you could hear me on there. Alex, it's also worth noting that our frontline workers that work on a one-to-one basis with vulnerable people and families also do this calculation as well. We've worked with those services as well and in the welcome places, and we're upskilling library staff as well.
James, if you wanted to add?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So just one point in addition to what colleagues have said. I think there was the question around our council tax support scheme as well and whether that's something that we might be able to look at. That's one of the options that's under consideration at the moment as to whether that could be targeted differently. There are, there's quite a rigid statutory timetable around that. We need to get any changes agreed in January, but there is the potential for us to do that, so that's something that we can take away if that would be useful.
It's, I think it certainly would, thank you. Right, councillor Jones, councillor Nas, councillor Bellbin, if you could keep your comments brief if you can, thank you.
I'll try and see if I can. Thanks for the report. My ward particularly suffers from children dropped into poverty as a result of private rented sector rents. Our children are disproportionately hit, so seeing that reactive element in here and your acknowledgement of that is really much appreciated. From your experience from last year and from what you're predicting of the cohort studies this year, if you were to map out the recipients of those payments, what do you think the major change is going to look like? And from your experience last year and what you're predicting this year, how much money, it's similar to the questions that were posted earlier, how many people are going to be disappointed, how much money will we be short of? And will these answers be part of our evidence to government next year to tell them to up their ideas up and rethink their abandonment in this scheme?
Thank you, councillor Nas.
Thank you for your presentation. How are we ensuring that people from seldom-heard communities are aware of the Household Support Fund? Is this information available in community languages? My second question is, I've been aware that community organisations are struggling with keeping up with rent and bills, which could potentially be a massive issue over the forthcoming months for longstanding community groups in deprived areas. So what support will we be able to offer then? I'm just thinking about local homework clubs and lunch clubs and things like that.
And I just wanted to ask quickly, what is the turnaround for applications to the Household Support Fund? How long are they taking on average? And do you predict that reducing the evidence required from certain groups will bring down that turnaround time? And also just about the phasing of the Household Support Fund. Did it run out at a certain point last year? And have we learnt from that in terms of phasing and assuming there will be great numbers of applications over the winter due to rising costs, et cetera?
Alex, Lorraine.
Just making sure I get all the questions down, I'll answer them fully. So in terms of the first question around mapping how the fund is spent and what we think will change, so I think, as was mentioned in the previous report, I think we've seen that food costs have been increasing, but yet energy costs have perhaps stagnated a little bit. I think there's also a little bit of an understanding that actually we're in a warmer period at the minute, and so I think we expect to see more money. We can see that compared to last year, we're already spending a lot more money on food, and that accounts for the increasing applications. So I think we're receiving twofold the number of applications that we're receiving for the same point last year, and that uptick can basically be attributed to the money that we're spending to support people with food. So that's what we're seeing now. But I think, you know, as you plan for winter, we know that then people will switch their heating back on, and if there isn't support put out there by the government to support people with energy costs when it gets to winter, then we'll expect a big uptick in money that we have to provide for energy costs as well. So that's kind of our current understanding in terms of the parameters of the scheme within the guidance.
We can share with you as well, and it's the same table that councillor Nas referred to before. We could show you by ward what's spent on food and energy over the last six months so that you can see and have that detail, and we'll use that in our planning going forward on the spend.
Yeah, we can break, we can map that down to sort of almost postcode level, so we can map it down to whatever level you would need that data at. It may be a little bit more limited with the energy support that we delivered, so Household Support Fund can provide that in as much detail as you like. Data sharing agreements with the government, seeing as they handle part of the energy schemes, might not be so easy, but I'll look into it for you. And then just in terms of the question regarding seldom-heard communities and what we're doing, so we've stepped up engagement over the past couple of months with organisations such as SADAC and other organisations who represent seldom-heard communities. One of the pieces of work that we're doing in that area is to look at the package of comms that we've created so far, take out those key messages, get them simplified so that they're easily translatable and they're provided as a packet to communities so that you can share, so they can be shared through platforms that perhaps the council wouldn't normally communicate through. So that's part of the work that Emma Taylor is carrying out at the minute. So she's doing a lot of work in making sure that there's some really clear and simple messages that can be shared easily through non-conventional methods in the best ways that suit the communities that they need to go to. And then also another piece of work that Emma is carrying out at the minute with you And then also another piece of work that Emma is carrying out at the minute with youth groups. So we'll be meeting, I'm going along with Emma in a couple of weeks. We're going to be visiting family centres and youth groups to talk about things from sort of new to debt and also perhaps, you know, living lives at home where they perhaps contribute to energy costs. And so we've been talking about the conversations that we can have in that environment. And that's working with Kirsty Sadomas from Citizens Advice as well. So sort of planning that out at the minute. And one last question I think was in terms of phasing and your question in terms of phasing. We didn't actually run out of the fund and that's part of the sort of the plan in terms of putting those sort of limited payments in place. Is making sure that the fund runs right through because the coldest part of the year is often from January to March. And, you know, what we might do is get to sort of January and say, actually, that four, four applications, we've got enough money. We'll remove that and we'll pay the fund. But we want to make sure that we've got enough money to support people in what perhaps will be the difficult, most difficult part of the year.
Just picking up on what Shefak said and what you've alluded to Fran as well, is that we do need to start and prepare people. So with the free school vouchers, we're thinking about going into schools and doing some money management courses and things and connecting things up so that we can start and understand that people can look at their household fund and start and work through what they need. And then we gain the evidence as well, like you say, to go back to national government and say, actually, the cost of living crisis, this is really real. So we need to do something.
Thank you both very much indeed for the work that's gone into this report and for answering our questions today. As, you know, colleagues have noted, you know, it is hard to escape recommendation five, which points out that shamefully the Household Support Fund runs out in March 2024. And as you've just set out, Lorraine, we're going to need to provide clear evidence, which will be very clear to government about the damaging implications of what this will mean. And that through all of our offices and through our political parties, I think it's incumbent on us to be putting pressure on to make sure that the, the government see the urgent needs to continue it beyond March 2024. So thank you. We have a number of recommendations ahead of us, which Alex ran through in his presentation. Our colleagues happy to support those recommendations. Brilliant. Thank you very much. Okay. Agenda item 10 Sheffield's Food Strategy and Future Commissioning Model for Improving Diet and Also Obesity Prevention for 2024 Through to 2029. And Jess Wilson and Greg Fell have joined us. If you could introduce yourselves and then just perhaps briefly introduce the report for us today. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chair. I'll start. So Greg Fell, Director for Public Health. I'll be reasonably quick. I'll say five things. The report gives you an overview of the refreshed food strategy and seeks approval of it. It's a significant, it's been developed significantly since the first Sheffield Food Strategy in 2018. And we give some priorities within it for the immediate period coming. Trying to manage a lot of different constituencies here. There's clearly a health constituency. There's also a climate and access and a social justice constituency. And trying to bring all of those together in what's known as the Sheffield Food Strategy. And finally seek some, seek approval from the committee for a set of investments, about £600,000 a year over the next five years. And the detail is in the report. And that's right. Jess?
Thank you, Greg. I'm Jess Wilson. I'm a health improvement principal in the public health team at the council and also the report. So the report, as Greg said, outlines a new proposed food strategy for Sheffield. It supports council goals to achieve net zero and to improve health and wellbeing and reduce health inequalities. And it also forms part of the cost of living crisis response. It's a high level strategy. It sets direction and aspirations within our council and for our city partners. And it's likely to lead to the development of further policy that will be brought forward for decisions as appropriate. It's very much framed around the barriers to accessing food, those being financial barriers that we've heard a lot about today. Also physical barriers and includes what we can do to protect people from harmful commercial influences on the food choices that they make. And it talks very much about future access to food and the cost of living crisis that we've heard about today. And the food price inflation can be attributed in quite a large part to the climate, to climate change. So actually, if we could take action now to improve the resilience of the food that we eat, improve the resilience of our food system and to eat more sustainably, that is a very early prevention of future cost of living crises. In addition to approving the food strategy, I'm asking committee to approve the, approve the improving diet and preventing obesity commissioning model for a further five years. This primarily supports the health outcomes of the food strategy, but many of the proposed initiatives will also support net zero and food access. The overall funding allocation is to remain the same as previous and that comes from the Ring Fens Public Health Grant. And the broad approach is to remain the same, but there's a slight redistribution of the funding and the rationale for that is given in the report. And lastly, committee are asked to approve the recommissioning of weight management services when the current contracts come to an end.
Thank you both very much indeed. Are there any colleagues who have any questions or comments for either Greg or Jess? Stunned into silence. Angela?
I just want to say thank you for finally bringing this here because it's taken a long time to get this done. And a lot of work has gone in and a lot of stakeholders and voluntary sector organisations have been involved and are very pleased that we finally got to this point. I think it's really important that we look at the big picture, which this tries, attempts to do. And it's like a first step if you want to address the food inequalities in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Jenzie. Councillor Williams?
Yeah, excellent report. Thank you very much. Just looking at the financials. You're basically spending the same amount of money every year up to 2029. Given that we're in a period of high inflation, does that mean your programme diminishes or will these kind of like will be indexed for inflation going forward?
I'll have a go. So government have slightly increased the Ring Fens Public Health Grant, but nowhere near, nowhere near meeting inflation. So the net, the net effect is a year-on-year quarter, which that weren't the case, but it is. We'll make the very, very, very best use of the resource that's available to us. But, but until we know difference, the increase in the Ring Fens Public Health Grant is 3.1% once the additional burdens have been taken into play. We know inflation runs faster than that. I don't know. That's what we know now. I don't know what next year, year after year after that allocation will be. That's an uncertainty. But I'll assure you, we'll do our very, very, very best by all of our stakeholders with regard to the money that we do have available.
Brilliant. Well, thank you from all of us for the work that's gone into this. And we've got five, six recommendations that are in the report. Our colleagues happy to accept those recommendations as set out. Unless you agree. Thank you very much indeed. Right, moving swiftly on, we have item 11, local land charges. And there we go. Okay, if you could just introduce yourself and then introduce briefly the report, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
I'm David Hollis. I'm the interim general counsel and in charge of legal services, which the local land charges comes under. I will be brief because hopefully there's not too many issues with this. Local land charges is a register that's retained by the council and it records matters against a property that aren't related to the land itself, that might appear in the land registry. So that's things such as planning conditions, highways agreements and tree preservation orders, things that purchasers of a property would need to know. Application is usually made by search companies who operate on behalf of purchasers against the register. Fees are charged and the legal basis that we do that is on cost recovery. So we seek to cover the cost of providing this service through the fees. So the request is to increase fees to meet the increases in costs and to maintain that cost recovery basis, which is predominantly staff costs. But it also reflects decreasing time spent on some matters. Just as a consequence, if this isn't agreed, that means that the, there will be a subsidising of the cost of providing this service from other council resources rather than from those who are seeking to use the service. And that would need to, a reduction in the ability to provide other services. So I don't know if there's any specific questions arising from the report.
Thank you very much, David. I've seen councillor Levery indicate.
Yeah, I'm just interested why this comes to S and R and not finance because we're looking at fees and charges and not other areas.
Under the constitution delegation, the fees and charges are delegated to the relevant policy committee. And this is the relevant policy committee for strategic support services as it now is resources as was. And that's why it properly sits here. I think what finance committee are looking at, fees and charges in terms of the budgetary process for next year. And it may be that we change the delegations as a result of that, but that's why it's coming here rather than finance committee.
Thank you very much, David. Any points? No? Okay. We have a number of recommendations. I'm just going to find the right page. We have 233, sorry. It's been a long meeting, friends. Okay, yeah. Recommended that we approve the proposed increase to the fees and we delegate to general counsel annual changes to the local land charges fees. Are people happy to accept those recommendations? Thank you very much. Thank you, David. Right, last but very not much least, we have a report on the extension of the dynamic purchasing scheme for transport services. And John Hudson has patiently waited all afternoon. So thank you very much indeed. If you could introduce yourself and briefly introduce the report, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Hudson. I'm a service manager for Transport Services. I'm here today to present to the committee a report for the extension of the dynamic purchasing scheme for commissioning of transport services. Transport is, the transport is commissioned for a variety of council services such as, such as vulnerable adults, emergency response, staff and client transportation and adult transport such as, and responsive transport such as the free Covid vaccine transport that we were involved in during the pandemic. The main area that is though, that we're doing, the main commission for is for the special educational needs and disabilities home to school service. And the advantages that we have with our transport commission is that the DPS is not a traditional framework, but we can add it and add and take contractors off as and when throughout the lifespan of the, of the contract. This in turn provides opportunities for new contractors to come on to the, to the contract. And it also gives council competitive marketplace for commissioning runs. As in now, currently there's about 24 contractors on there all competing for runs. The other advantage is there is a flexibility that this offers is that the demand for the services has actually been increasing. We've been able to respond from that. For example, in the year 2022, 21, 22, the combined service, which is including the in-house service as well as the competitive market, was 1,973 passengers a day. The average for this year has risen to 2,270 passengers a day. But with the competitive commissioning that we have, we've managed to keep the price per seat stable over the last three years. Other advantages is the, of this competitive commissioning is that there's no long-term ties and it can be withdrawn without financial penalty or for the council and thus enabling flexibility to implement policy changes or respond to legislative change, legal changes. The commissioning is also designed so any, any range of businesses can join you, but they either be large, small or, or new startups. The majority of the spend that we have on here is spent with local businesses who will then in turn employ local people from all different parts of the community from the city. We're also with them being local businesses within this commissioning, we're there to support and guide them through their carbon production journey. The other thing as well which this, this commissioning offers is with the majority of passengers being some of the most vulnerable people we're transporting in the city, safeguarding is one of the core elements. And this includes mandatory safeguarding training and the transport safeguarding code of conduct for all staff who work on it. So it's recommended that we extend this commissioning strategy for five years to, so we can get fully utilised the benefits of it.
Thank you very much. John, any comments, any questions? Councillor Mohammed?
I'm just interested in how you talked about safeguarding and children. Are you able to tell us how many people have been barred from providing services in the last five years? Particularly for children in taxis. Has that gone up? Has it gone down? And are those people barred for life or is it a process of being allowing those people to come back on for whatever the reasons are? Appreciate, you might not have the answer to hand, but would appreciate a more detailed response from you.
John, I'll take councillor Williams if that's all right and then you can come back on both. Thank you. Councillor Williams?
It's a quick question. I suspect you won't have the answers, John. It'd be quite interesting to have a breakdown of the costs for each of those areas. Yeah, I'm sure you don't have that now, but it'd be quite interesting to know. I'm referring to the areas on page 245.
Thank you. Thank you. John?
I don't have the exact data where I can get it for the number of drivers that have been barred. There is an appeals process in place. They do write to me and then we share that information, go through safeguarding to check and look up the incident. Depending on the nature of the incidents as well, some incidents upon review, you think, yes, you know, and the driver's explained the situation and they are. Some incidents, I won't go into specifics, you, you would question if they are suitable for transporting vulnerable people.
So how many people have then been referred to the licensing board from that group? Or shall we take these away from this meeting? Because I'd like to take up some of these issues that have been.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more than happy to answer more in-depth questions and have the details ready so I can. I know it's a concern within the taxi trade as well because I'm meeting with hopefully one of the representatives to have these discussions with.
Thank you. I've seen councillor Johnson and councillor Jones. We are just coming up to the allocated end time for this meeting. So we will just need to adjourn, sorry, extend the meeting formally for 30 minutes. But I think unless I see anyone else who wants to speak, it's just the final two questions and comments from councillor Johnson and then councillor Jones. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. Try and keep it quick. Thanks, John, for the report. Happy to approve this. Just want to ask though, is it, we've got a fleet of vehicles alone. Is it cheaper for us to provide home to school transport from our own fleet? Or does it cost more to bring in all the taxis and private minibus hire?
Councillor Johnson?
Thank you for the report. On 1.4, there's a table in there in terms of the costing. As you said, they kind of stayed reasonably the same. Actually, there's been a slight decrease, which is a bit surprising in the amount of money that we're paying per seat. Surprising considering the spikes that we saw in fuel and also the implications of taxi drivers and such like having to change over their fleet to be complying with in-home legislation. Do you think that the figures put in here, considering the pressures on the taxi trade and possible bidders into this contract, will, will cover the period appropriately? Or do you see financial pressures on this quite significant amount of money over the next couple of years? What risks are there that we'll not be able to live with in this budget?
The first question about fleet versus private contractor, yes, it is cheaper to transport on the, on the in-house fleet. But at the moment, the fleet is near its capacity. And due to, as I've said in the report, the demand of the numbers increasing really rapidly, which has led to the use of the private contractors. The figures that we've put in there are based on the figures, this year's figures. We anticipate that we're working with colleagues in children's to look at why the demand's going up and see if that can be addressed by providing, from what I'm told. and see if that can be addressed by providing, from what I'm told, providing services locally, more than around transport to transport journey. It's a long-term thing. So we're hoping that the pressure will, the budget will be roughly there about it, taking into account inflation and everything. Hopefully it'll be less, but we've, we, that's why we've quoted the figures of the latest fees we've got.
To come back on that briefly.
Very brief.
Yeah. So I'm just wondering, I was going to ask if we can actually have a serious look at some investor saver approach if we look at some more capital to expand the fleet. Completely take your point about the fleet won't take it at the moment, but is it sensible, given that this has been an ongoing fairly serious revenue pressure for a number of years, to look at some capital investment in, in, increase the fleet at least by part and with a view to reducing the ongoing revenue thing? Have some take away. I'm expecting you to answer it now. Thanks, Councilor Johnson. Okay, thank you very much, John. We've got a recommendation in front of us that we are asked to approve the commissioning of transport services from private transport contractor providers for the next five years as set out in the report. Are people happy to support that recommendation? Thank you very much. Thank you very much, John, for your patience. Thank you for the work that's gone into this. And that draws this meeting to a close. Thank you everyone for your contributions today. See you on the 2nd of August.